Thank you for your patience. Thank you all for your patience. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P M. Calling the meeting to order at six oh seven P M. Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you very much. May I have a may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mary Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cesar Flores?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott Freels?
Here.
Councilmember John Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie Jordan?
Here.
All members are present. We have a coram, mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to call for a moment of silence for Jim Ostick, a very well-loved and respected member of our community who passed away suddenly. Thank you. Attorney Raffi, can you please bring us out of our first closed session of this evening?
Yes, I can. Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'd like to report that the council met in closed session this evening at a special meeting at five P M. Council met on the matter listed on the agenda, which was the performance evaluation for the city manager as a public employee. The council provided comments and its evaluation. This is a personnel matter involving a public employee, and the details of the evaluation must remain confidential. So that's my report on the closed session held earlier this evening.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to now go into closed session number two. Conference with labor negotiators, cities designated representatives, the city council, unrepresented employees, city manager Don Reynolds.
And so the council and myself will retire to the administrative offices here.
Before doing that, Madam Mayor, we need to allow the public to comment on this closed session item specifically. Your city councils, chambers, there you are.
Do we have any public comment on the conference with labor negotiators, cities designated representatives, the city council, unrepresented employees, city manager Don Reynolds? We have no public comment in the chambers. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on Zoom?
Anyone that would like to speak on the closed session matter specifically, please raise your hand by using the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. For those that have dialed in, press star nine. Now is the time to raise your hand and your three-minute time will is allowable for the closed session matter only. There are no hands raised at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. If you will all please excuse us for a moment. Thank you all. Thank you for your patience. Welcome back. Attorney Raffi, can you please take us out of the closed session?
Thank you, mayor. I will do that. My report after a closed session is that the council met on the item listed on the agenda, which was a conference with the labor negotiators, cities designated representative for the city council, the unrepresented employee was city manager Don Reynolds. The council received information and provided direction during the closed session this evening. A subcommittee of two members of the council was appointed to meet with the city manager later during this meeting. And that concludes my report out from closed session.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are open for public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the council on matters not on this agenda. The law does not permit council action or extended discussion of any item not on the agenda, except under special circumstance. If council action is requested, the council may place the matter on a future agenda. I would like to now open this up to folks if they wish to say a few words about Jim as well. Norma, do we have any public comment in Zoom land?
Thank you, everyone who has who is attending by Zoom tonight. If you would like to speak this evening under public comments, please raise your hand now by pressing the raise hand button. It is at the bottom of your screen. For those that have dialed in, please press star nine. You will have three minutes to speak on any matter that pertains under here of public comment. We have no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment in the chambers? No, no public comment in the chambers. Thank you all very much. Consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing action indicated for those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. Is there anybody on the council who would like to pull an item on the consent agenda? Councilmember Edge?
No, I don't have.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Flores?
I don't have anything.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freels?
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to pull for C, adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of San Juan Bautista, accepting resignations and adding members to the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. Do we have any anyone in the public who would wish to pull an item on the consent agenda? Sorry, Norma, can you do Zoom, please?
We do have a hand raised here in Zoom, mayor, so I'm going to bring in Irvin. And if you unmute yourself, you'll have the opportunity to state which item you are requesting to be pulled for a public comment.
Irvin, hi, welcome. This is for pulling an item on the consent agenda.
Right, I think I jumped the the jumped ahead here. I've got another issue, so I'll withdraw my my hand.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody in chambers who wishes to pull an item on the consent agenda? Thank you. May I have a motion on the consent items? A, sorry, A, B, D, E, and F. A, B, D, E, F. Motion by Vice Mayor Flores, second by Councilmember Freeman. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. The item pulled was for the resolution of the city council of the City of San Juan Bautista, accepting resignations and adding members to the committee. Members who have submitted resignations are Beverly Meamber, Luke Curbs, and Fran Fitzharris. And it is my understanding that Fran Fitzharris would like to withdraw her resignation. Thank you very much. And we are accepting the application for Deanna Snyder. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. So we're accepting resignations for Beverly Meamber and Luke Curbs, and accepting the application for Deanna Snyder. May I have a motion on this, please?
We're moved.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Motion by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Vice Mayor Flores. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item five, presentations, proclamations, informal items, and reports. Proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Do we have anybody, any members of the community or on Zoom or within the chambers who is accepting this? Thank you very much, Jill Pagaran. Welcome. Small Business Saturday, whereas the City of San Juan Bautista celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local community and economy. According to Small Business Administration, there are thirty point two million small businesses in the United States, representing ninety-nine point nine percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point five percent of employees in private sector in the United States, sixty-two percent of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of two thousand and twenty-two in order to stay in business. Sixty-five percent of U.S. small business owners say it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And whereas ninety-five percent of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment and agree small businesses are essential to the community. Whereas the City of San Juan Bautista supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas the impacts of the pandemic have emphasized the extra importance of the need to support local businesses and significance of shopping locally to support our economy. Now, therefore, the City of San Juan, the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista does hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, as San Juan Bautista's Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of the community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you very much. Words of wisdom? Is it green?
Green.
Button in the back.
Button in the back.
No sound on Zoom.
Oh, you have to speak directly into the microphone, sorry.
Out and about in the community, giving away the recyclable bags.
Still no sound.
Reusable bags and also postcards of San Juan Bautista and to thank people who are out shopping that day. So please stop by and see us. We'll probably be a brewery twenty-five parklet.
Thank you very much. Small Business Saturday, October, November, sorry, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we do have someone here on Zoom that would like to speak as well.
Okay.
Danny Joe? That?
Oh, hey, Danny Joe, welcome. You have three minutes.
Hi, Madam Mayor. Hello, council. I'm not sure, because you guys were in closed session, so did I miss the public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, sorry, we're on five B.
Well, my apologies. I'm just here tonight because I wanted to talk about Jim Ostick.
Can you wait until five C, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Proclamation for Native Heritage Month. City manager, do we have?
We invited two members. Alonzo Lopez and Ari Parker, and I don't see that either are here today, unless they are members representing the Amulmutsin tribe that I don't know the names for. I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you very much. Proclamation, Native American Heritage Month. Whereas in nineteen ninety, Congress passed and President George H.W. Bush signed into law a joint resolution designating the month of November as the first National American Heritage Month, also known as Native American Indian Month. And whereas the month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contribution of native people. And whereas Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the general public about tribes, to raise a general awareness about the unique challenges native peoples have faced both historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges. And whereas despite a painful history marked by unjust federal policies of assimilation and termination, American Indian and Alaska Native peoples have preserved, persevered, my apologies. And whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the countless contributions of native peoples, past and present, honor the influence they have had on the advancement of our nation, and recommit ourselves to upholding trust and treaty responsibilities, strengthening tribal sovereignty, and advancing tribal self-determination. And whereas the City of San Juan Bautista acknowledges that it is built upon the homelands and villages of the Amulmutsin indigenous peoples of this region, and that the city as we know it would not exist were it not for indigenous stewardship of these lands for millennia and the unfree labor of indigenous peoples who built the mission San Juan Bautista and other foundational infrastructure of the city. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista does hereby proclaim November two thousand and twenty-two as Native American Heritage Month in the City of San Juan Bautista, and encourage all citizens to join in reflecting upon the ongoing struggles of Native American people on this land, as well as their great resilience, and to honor, value, and celebrate their historic and continuing contributions to our region and beyond. Thank you so much. City council and staff announcements. This is an opportunity for council and staff to share the community calendar and announce upcoming dates of interest to the general public. If I can start this one and announce an upcoming date of interest to the general public, it is our very own Vice Mayor's birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Eighty.
Eighty years young.
Eighty years around the sun.
Councilmember Edge? Fun stuff.
Fun stuff.
Calendar of events.
Well, you know, I didn't, I didn't go to my.
That's that's coming next.
Okay. Oh, that's calendar events. Okay.
Yes.
Well, okay. Fun stuff. We are going to be having. We're going to be having a for the month of December. The seniors are gathering. And I think many of you know that we have started a senior center group here of our own. And so anyway, we're going to be at the community center. We're going to have a potluck, and we're going to make it a boutique. We're getting together, having meetings and planning that out, and that's going to be fun. You know, the other thing that I I I just want to say is that the community has been just great in coming and reaching out and just being a part of these little workshop that workshops that we've been having. We just had one last week. We made pumpkins with succulents, and anyway, that was very well attended. And the lady that that keeps up our barrels with the with the succulents, she taught us how to glue succulents on moss and and pumpkins, and it was just a great, a great event, and we had a lot of fun. And it was very well attended. I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Flores.
The only thing I have is that on December third, we have the lights on parade sponsored by Rotary. We invite everyone to join us as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freels?
Just a quick friend, the name of the carolers come into town. Garlic City Choir. Okay, yeah, they'll be in town. I'm excited. We're Sean and I are excited because our neighbor Ella, who goes to Christopher High, she's part of that, and we've been listening to her rehearse and if they're as good as what she's been doing, it's going to be pretty fun. And also for folks traveling to Southern California this week, be prepared for Santa Ana winds. It's supposed to hit pretty hard this week, so if you're going down south for Thanksgiving, bring your eyewash, because it's going to get it's going to get nasty.
What was the date on that birth event?
Fran, when's the garlic, when do they come in, the carolers for this?
Sorry, Frank, can you come up to the podium? Sorry, only because Zoom land Zoom land cannot hear you.
So we have them scheduled for three sessions or three days. The first is going to be this Saturday from one to three in front of our community Christmas tree. And then we also have them scheduled on December eleventh to celebrate our parade that the Rotary is doing, and they're going to be at the community tree from one to three. And then we're also going to have them on December seventeenth as part of our third on third led by Margot. And they are going to be scheduled three to six. So and they are fantastic. We're so excited to have them.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I I'd first like to Jim now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
As many of you know, he died last week unexpectedly. And I'm proud to say he was my friend, and we talked a lot over the many, many years about his travels, which were far and many. And he is also a fellow basketball geek. He coached the girls' basketball team in Santa Barbara. I'm Santa Barbara area high school for quite a few years, as I understand. And then he moved up to and taught at San Bernardino High for for a while and retired. And he's just an all-around great guy, and I'm really going to miss. I usually had coffee and a blueberry turnover at the at the bakery occasionally, not not any on any schedule or anything, but it was just he was just a good friend. I'm going to miss him. On a little bit happier note or different note, I wanted to announce that three C E is.
Fun stuff. Sorry.
This is different.
Okay, go for it. Go ahead.
Central Coast Community Energy. It used to be Monterey Bay Community.
There you go.
These guys right here. Okay, so they have a lot of grant money available for HVAC upgrades. Darlene and I are personally replacing our two old gas wall heaters, which are horrible and inefficient and spew out toxic fumes occasionally with a heat pump, which will both have heating and air conditioning. Dual zone for upstairs and downstairs. Their rebates are between three and four thousand dollars. That's a significant amount of money. I would encourage everybody, and I mean, everybody in the city, to think about it if you need an upgrade. Three thousand dollars is not chump change. It's it's a good hunk of the project. And so I I urge people to do that. You'll be doing the environment and yourself a favor. And finally, I'd like to ask the city attorney to bring back to the city council next month a revised ordinance for certain planning commissioners where each council person has as a selection for one planning commission, but all are still approved by council members. This provides a one-to-one accountability when the council and planning commission, which is the way it was before two thousand and seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Danny Joe, are you over there? Sorry, it says that on your thing. Dan, would you like to say a few words about Jim?
I am. I would. First, Madam Mayor, I want to congratulate you because you have been reelected. I don't know. I don't know if you're aware of this. I think the results just came in. But Jackie Morris, three forty-six, you were next at three fifteen votes. You were second in votes.
Thank you very much, Dan.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Madam Mayor. And as I have told you privately, I consider that to be a great thing for this town, because I think you're doing a very, very good job, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Now, now, as regards Jim Ostick, I think that we as a city need to honor this man. This was a truly remarkable man, and I'm not going to I'm going to try to hold back the emotions right now, but this was a truly remarkable man. This guy walked across America. He rode his bike across America. He was. He was an asset to our community, and those of us who knew us knew him, like like John just said. We were better for it, better for knowing Jim. He was the kindest, most gentleman, but more more importantly, he was just remarkable in his love for parks and open space and trails and things like that. So I'm not sure what we do to honor him, but I think we need to. And I think that this city council needs to say, yes, that's true. We need to. I don't know if that look, I don't know what that looks like. Is it Jim Ostick Day? Is it a bronze statue somewhere? Is it naming a park or a trail after him, something? We have to do something to honor this man. We really, really do, because we were blessed to have him in our presence during the time that we did. And I miss him, just like you, John, I miss him. That's all. And let me have, let me add one thing. I would be happy to lead the effort. So if this council wants to form some kind of a subcommittee or something to come up with some ways to honor Jim Ostick, I'd be happy to lead the charge on that and pick up the laboring ore and make that happen. Maybe it's a maybe it's a bench, or I think, Leslie, you said to me last night, we were texting, like, maybe a a plaque or a rock at the at the base of the Deanna's Trail. Maybe that would be wonderful, but we need to do something, because this was a truly remarkable guy.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. We appreciate your word. Words for him as well. Is there anybody else out there who wants to say something about Jim?
I'd like to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Edge.
You know, I only met Jim since COVID. We were voluntary to give out and distribute food to the farm workers. But in in working the way you do, you get to know each other, and I found out that he had worked for the high school and was a teacher for twenty years. I I found out about the cross-country trek that he did. And and I have to say that he was a part of our senior group that we formed. He loved helping, and all I had to do was give him a call and ask him for something, and he was right there for me. Last Wednesday, I called him to help with setup. And I thought it was a little odd that he didn't respond. And so then I thought, well, text, so I texted, and he still didn't respond, but he always was there for whoever. And I know there were a lot of people in our community that And I know there were a lot of people in our community that are going to miss him. And I will miss him as well because he became a great friend and a great supporter of our little group of seniors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we do have hands raised here in Zoom.
Thank you. I I appreciate everybody's comments if we can keep them short only because of the timeliness of the the length of the agenda and we really do want to get to discussion items that we have missed. Go ahead, Norma. Who do we have?
Thank you. The one hand we have raised so far right now is Jackie Morris Lopez. I'm bringing her in. And yeah, in the meantime, for anyone else who has joined us by Zoom, do please raise your hand by using the raise hand button to be ready. Jackie, once you start, I'll start the three minute timer.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan and city council members. I too want to say that I'm really deeply saddened by the news of Jim. I found out Sunday morning and I was in shock, be like the rest of us, because I had just spoken to him. And through all the comments that I read about him on Facebook and everybody that I've spoken to in regards to Jim, he was such a unique individual and such a kind, unpretentious type of man with a lot of accomplishments. And I think our community has just suffered a huge loss. And condolences to all of his family and his friends and all of you sitting there on the dais. And thank you, Dan. That was an awesome speech and John as well. It just kind of makes me feel deep in my heart that, you know, we should be kind. We should say good morning. We should say hello. Thank you, because you never know when that might be the last encounter with that person. And the last time I talked to Jim was actually two times. We went to the Anzara girls volleyball team and watched a game and he was there. So I went and spoke to him for a few minutes. And it was really nice talking to him. He was so supportive of the community. I mean, he didn't have children or grandkids that I know of. And he was right there supporting our kids. And then the last time I spoke to him was in front of the window at Lola. And it was before the election and he he was just really sweet and very encouraging and I will miss him. I will miss seeing him and miss his smile. So condolences to all of you, all of us. It's a huge loss. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, Danny Joe has his hand raised again.
Thank you. No, sorry. Sorry, Dan. I I appreciate your comments, but you had your three minutes.
And we have no other hands raised than at this time here on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Reports from city council representatives to regional organizations and committees. Sorry. Councilmember Edge.
I don't have any reports.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Flores.
I attended the LACO meeting and we hired a new executive director because of Bill Nichols resignation and we hired a female. I can't think of her name, but she she's part time works somewhere else as a city manager.
Okay.
The same, not city manager.
Thank you. Councilmember Frails.
Yes, we did. Public Safety, you know, we had Public Safety. County OES gave us a nice presentation. She's ramping up the CERT program again. All right, acronym Citizen Emergency Response Training. For those interested, contact County OES. And also I'd like to personally thank County OES for letting us use their mobile billboards for the for the traffic stuff that was really nice of them to offer that up. I think we worked the burp, the we worked the bugs out in the thing for them. So it worked out for everybody. So that's all we got.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, thank you. There was no integrated waste management meeting this month, but they did put a luncheon on at the community food bank in Hollister. And afterwards, there was a short tour of the food bank that was given by the executive director. The food bank is relying on the new law SB 1383, which is which involves food reclamation to procure many of its food items and the integrated waste management is the lead agency in that process. The intergovernmental meeting was held first week in November and we received a presentation by Dr. Sean Tannenbaum about the Hollister High School and their situation. They are extremely close as in 20 students off of their maximum enrollment. So a second high school is needed as soon as possible. At the Ambag meeting Wednesday night, last Wednesday night, we received a presentation from the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Act, which is which provides a lot of state and federal monies available for something called DCS fast chargers for electric vehicles. Lots of grant money is available in private entities and I'm emphasizing the private here. The federal money is tied to highway corridors. And our highway corridor 150 must be within a one mile radius of a highway corridor. Our 156 counts as one of those highway corridors and a one mile radius includes the entire town of San Juan Batista. So there's not anybody who would not be eligible. So I'm encouraging the private owners, mainly people like the windmill market, soccer field parking lot, Laro Station and many unused parking lots in this town converted into eat chargers. The nice thing is the property owner will make money off of just like a gas station makes money off of pumping gas with car. The EV charging space will make money off of electricity. That's that's you know what I mean, fed into the car. So that's critical. We also went through a successful salary negotiation with the CEO of Ambag. And on a on a personal note, I was elected Ambag President of Ambag for the following year at the meeting. I will be the first one from San Benito County in over 20 years. See where else. That's it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure I got everything.
Thank, thank, thank you very much. And we missed one.
I I'm sorry. I apologize. I did forget to report that we are cog interviewed a person to be the new director. We don't know whether the person is going to take the job or not, but anyway, we did interview them last night. And then I also wanted to invite everyone and also let everyone know that we are having listening sessions for the senior center that we're trying to establish here in San Juan Batista. And so I like to encourage anybody that's interested to to contact me and I can give you all the information when we meet and the times. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Treasurer's report and monthly financial statement by our city treasurer, Michelle Sebastian.
Hi, how's it going?
Hey, Michelle, how are you?
Doing good. Can you guys see me?
Yep.
Awesome. All right. So I'll make it brief. Good evening to the mayor and the council members. We'll start with the general fund. Year to date, our net effect is currently a positive balance of 334, 334K. The month over month change there was an increase of 91,000. The on the revenue front, one of the items that stood out was sales tax. While it was slightly lower than last month, it was still pretty healthy. So that was one item that stood out. On the expenditure side, some of the vendors that stood out would be a computer share corporate trust, which is part of our semi annual fees that are to pay off the bond. This is yearly, so it's nothing out of the ordinary. Then we have moderate penitential engineering, which is the contracting fees for Baruti Park, which is going to be billed back under CIP 1942. And then we have JR fencing, which is the fence that was put in at the school for joint use that will also be billed back under CIP 2207. And then we had a second batch of business grants that went out. So that went out to our local, local business owners. And it was a large one. So that's about maybe 20, 30K that went out. We're probably expecting a few more to go out, but this is one of the larger ones that went out. Nothing out of the ordinary. Under the Water Enterprise Fund, year to date or not affect, there was a positive balance of 88,000. The month over month change was an increase of 23,000 and revenues are still in line with budget at 26% year to date. I would say that this is pretty flat. We now stopped to the peak of seasonality. So we're pretty flat at this point now. Nothing out of the ordinary. It's just time of the year right now. And then as for the expenditure side, the expenses are in line with expectation. I wouldn't say that there's any big callouts there. And for this sewer enterprise fund, year to date, our net effect is also a positive balance of 183, 83,000. Sorry about that. The month over month change there was an increase of 47,000. Revenues are slightly higher in line with budget at 33% and no material callouts for this. So that's kind of what I have for now. Let me know if you have questions, but that's it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments and concerns from the council? Councilmember Edge?
No questions or comments. Vice Mayor Flores?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Frails.
Questions, comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
None right now. Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions, comments or concerns from the public? Zoom.
Anyone who would like to comment on this, please raise your hand by using the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And when you are brought in, you will have five minutes to speak on the matter of the treasurer's report. And right now I am bringing in Urban.
Thank you very much. And that will be three minutes.
Did I say five? I apologize.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Hi, Urban. Welcome.
Okay, hi. Okay, this is the question that I had earlier. And it has to do with the treasurer's report, the warrant listing. Can you explain that that is, please?
Explain what the warrant listing is, is that right?
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, so great question. So the warrant listing, what you're seeing is all the checks that are going out of our general fund. So this can be operating expenses. This can be capital improvement projects that are going out. What you're seeing here is also the employees that we have on payroll. So Dawn, city clerk. So this is all the benefits that are going out. So there's a lot of expenses that are going out here. I normally call out some of the larger expenses and then there is some recurring expenses that I normally like to call out. So that's kind of what you're seeing on the warrant listing. But let me know if you have more questions.
No, that does it. Thanks very much.
Yeah. And then if I may, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
If there is any additional questions as you're coming through the warrant listing, I'm happy to answer any. The email is a little lengthy. The email is on the city council on the city portal, but Dawn also has my email for the city. So if anybody has questions on the warrant listing on specific items, happy to answer any of those. I do keep a list of them, so feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else on Zoom?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Anybody in chambers? No comments on chambers. Thank you very much. City managers report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Sorry.
Thank you. I I need to bring up my slides. I forgot a little bit earlier. I apologize for that. But in the meanwhile, I think I have this is just taking a minute. And then we can get on to, I don't see anyone from the sheriff's department tonight. We'll get the fire chief on here real quick.
We're getting no sound from the chambers.
Oh, okay. Now you can hear me.
Thank you. Yes, Don, we can hear you.
Thank you. Sorry. All right. I wanted to just go ahead and start with the fire chief actually and let him talk about, he's got a couple of slides to share. What I will do then is let him get on as well. Bob, do you want, I have those two slides. Do you want to show them yourself or do you want?
Um, I I think I would trust you to show them there, city manager.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Thank you and welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, everyone. Batista, the the two slides that I have are analytical slides of call volume within San San Juan Batista and some of the outline areas of Station 3. If I could get the slides up.
I have them up earlier. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had them on earlier.
Let me see.
Let me go back. Here we go. Let's see. So you have two of them. Incidents, you want call report. We viewed incident counts or?
Let's do the yes, let's do the incident counts because that's a little bit more detailed. And and it gives it gives you folks a snapshot of what what we work with and actually the call volume that's happening in your city. And and like I said, the outline area, which is basically District 4. Do you guys see them right now?
No, I'm not. Adobe is not coming up. Don't do it because I see what's happening. I'm sorry. It's embedded in my email.
Oh, you do want me to try it?
It's coming up now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we see that you're starting to share the screen, but we don't see the document yet.
Yeah, it says I'm sharing. Okay. This is incidents percentile report and then this is the incident. And this is the incident count. Can you see that, Bob?
No, I can't, but I got a copy of it in front of me.
It's still looking.
Yeah, it's still loading or we're just seeing a black screen at this time.
I should have made a PowerPoint presentation. I was trying to be clever. I'm not trying that again.
Yeah, I've got them loaded as Adobe, but I'm not getting Adobe in my screen share.
Can Bob share it?
Yeah, Bob's got these co-hosts.
Okay, let me go ahead and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And where am I at? We'll do the visual. There we go. Can you guys see that?
In a moment. Yep.
Here we go. Yes, thank you.
Great, great. That was luck. Okay, that's all that was. All right. So if you can see my cursor floating around there, I'm going to kind of walk through it from from left to right and then I'm going to show you what we have on your right hand side. So I I chose last year and of course, we're not done with last year. We had a total of 252 calls just in the West Side jurisdiction. Some of those calls are auto aid agreement and mutual aid agreement. Our auto aid agreement is with Roma Stride County. And we go to quite a few of their calls, either vehicle accidents or structure fires. And every once in a while, we'll help them out with medical aids, but they really call us when they need more than one apparatus. And I I didn't break down the amount of those calls, but I'll I'll give you that number on the on the next council meeting. So what we have, like I was stating earlier, Station 4, 252 calls. You have at the bottom here, the amount of fires that we respond to and in the percentage of medical aids. So you see the EMS right there, it's emergency medical service, 50, 56% and 37% are other. Well, what we consider other are your hazardous conditions, no fire. And it would be like flammable combustible spills, chemical releases, wires down. And then you have service calls, which are, say, somebody locked their keys in the car and the car is running. Our guys are getting really good at opening doors and not making any damage. So those are the type of calls that they go on additionally. All hazard, we we try to address everything out there. And like I said, we provide a lot of aid to Roma Stride County, but they provide even more service to us. And I I wish I could, I wish this was a live screen because I could change the the date range and I can even go down. The 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 date range and I can even go down into particular um. Um, calls and particular uh intersections. So I'm gonna shorten this part of my screen so I could pull up the next slide. Which is gonna give you uh an eyeball on um response times. There we go. Okay, so if you look on the right-hand side here, you have um your 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 national standard, which is an eight-minute. Um, uh response time and eight minutes consists of uh two-minute dispatch. That's nine-one-one telling the fire station um wh- what's going on and in two minutes to get dressed. Irregardless if we're already dressed in the middle of the day and we're running to the vehicle, um, we take into consideration. How much time it takes for us to get up at two in the morning to go to a vehicle accident or a medical aid. So that's another two minutes, that's four minutes burn. Um, and then we implement um a four-minute travel time. So that eight-minute encompasses all of that time with an effective response force of three firefighters. And we try to meet that goal eighty percent of the time. Okay, so within the city limits, you 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 see here that we have a thirty-eight uh. Um, out of thirty-eight calls who have a nineteen percentile of effectiveness. What that says is, within the city limits, w- we're meeting our goal. But if we have that call out on the 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 furthest northwest end of one-on-one. That's a long travel time, so that's gonna bring down our average. Or if they got, if they have to go all the way down to Mitchell Road where the um uh adjoining district is, that'll. To, you know, in the middle of the day, we're at two o'clock, all the way up to seven o'clock, as you all know, the traffic. I- is gonna stop us, so a- all of our good averages, meeting those goals in town are are spot on. And we're ninety to a hundred percent there, however, with those long distances, it's gonna bring us down a bit. And I thought it was important to show you guys this, so you could take a a peek at uh the analytics that we use whenever. I go to the city council at Hollister and pound on the podium for um additional staffing. Or another engine or another deployment spot. I say deployment spot being a fire station like San Juan Oaks. San Juan Oaks is gonna bridge that gap for um District One, which is uh Station One in downtown Hollister. And in Station Four, which is y- your guys' back door, the the chicken coop. So um, wha- once that fire station five opens up, y- you're gonna see. These numbers tend to drop and it's gonna drop considerably. Um. Th- these analytics are are the data, the data doesn't lie. When I go up in front of my guys and and I request for more support, this will speak my narrative. Instead of me trying to be out there and 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 be a used car salesman, thi- this right here will speak the narrative for me. Um, that that concludes my my portion of of the analytics. Um, do you have any questions for me and I'll and I'll get off the screen. A- also, I can email this to you or Don can email this information to you also.
Thank you very much. Council member Edge?
Thank you, Chief, that was a great report. I just have one question on April, it's it's, April is blank.
April, yeah, okay, let me take a look at April. Um, hold on, let me get my cheaters, my my cheaters here, uh. Um, you know, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to take a look at that, it looks like. It looks like February, March, it looks like it 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 took the more of. The the more, because you're missing a couple of them, February, March, April is missing, February's missing, April's missing. The the numbers are there, it just shows uh, looks like maybe even. Um, every two months, I'm not even gonna say a quarter. Um, I and and I don't think it's because there weren't any calls, there were, obviously there was calls. I think that's that's just the way the a- the analytics ran.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your report, no questions.
Thank you.
You can hear me?
Uh, yes.
Council member Frails?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, council member Freeman?
Thank you, uh, Chief Bill Martin, um. You mentioned the San Juan Oaks uh fire station, which is uh in the future, I guess, a year away or six months away. Uh, will that be the primary backup for us then if a- a- our apparatus gets called out to uh. An EMS service on on one-on-one or something like that?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna say yes, but I'm not gonna discount the fact that we've got a strong working relationship with Aromas. Um, and and even that will be support for Aromas. So if um your Station Four goes out to a vehicle accident in um Aromas's area, one-twenty-nine. We'll bump up San Juan Oaks to Fire Station Four to cover that area. So that's a a hard bump in cover, or we could do it from um San Juan Oaks deployment area, it'll be a soft bump in cover. So you you will never not have any coverage. I hope I didn't confuse too much, I hope that kind of made sense there.
I think so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from Zoom?
Anyone who would like to comment at this time, please use the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. We have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Any comments from the chambers? No comments in the chambers. Chief, thank you very much for the report, shout out to the coop. Be safe out there.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief. Um, I could say I didn't see any representatives from the sheriff, but I do have uh. Uh, representative from our city engineer here to talk about the roundabout, which is a slide or two down the road. Yeah, um, so we we did, we've been onboarding our new city engineer, MNS Engineering Firm. Uh, Paul Greenfield is the civil engineer working for us, supported with Jerry uh who's on the line tonight. Um. It's been great uh working with them, we started our uh pavement management program, our our big street improvement project, despite the weather, it's it's hard to. Lay the asphalt down in the cold weather, but we're getting work on the concrete. But you'll see MNS out working with them and our original inspector, uh Terry in CSG. Um, we've been sharing project lists and turning the city infrastructure, especially on storm drain systems to make sure that they're in good shape. Uh, prior to heavier heavier rains. Uh, we did meet with the fire advisory committee and and council member Fields was there with me in October. Uh, we uh talked about updating the feasibility study. And also a two-day public discussion in January about forming a fire district. So keep an eye out for the third week or so in January, the two public uh conversations about forming a fire district in our county. That's on the horizon after the holidays. Um, we are interviewing deputy city clerk candidates uh on the seventeenth of this week. We're very excited, we have uh five now qualified candidates out of the nine that applied. We've got a much better response this time and uh I'm sure we'll pick a good good choice for our new deputy city clerk and I'll stick with it as a good team member. Um. Want to want to thank again Trish uh Pace who's sticking around and helping us get these agendas together, it's a lot of work. And she's been uh very dedicated and we appreciate her support as well. Um. With the public safety, uh the law enforcement, the the deputy, dedicated deputy remains on Sunday through Thursday shift. And uh I was unable to meet with the sheriff this month. We were hoping that the staffing would improve in November, so I'm looking uh for an update on that. And I do have a meeting with the sheriff tomorrow, I believe, to make up for the meeting we missed earlier. Um, we have had situations, we had a shoplifting at Windmill where there was a three-hour wait for a deputy. And we uh came across a business with their door open on Third Street. And had to wait four hours for the deputy to show uh for that call. So I know these aren't high priority calls, but it's an example of uh 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 sometimes we give a slow response on the low, low priority items. Um, private security, we continue uh four officers per day, seven days a week. There are two officers from four to four twelve, overlapping with two officers from twelve with seven. And then code enforcement is uh does fluctuate, he's doing a lot of supervising with the uh private security in the form of uh training. Especially in relation to parking citations. Um, last week, uh. Uh, twenty-six parking citations were written and six warnings. So that's way up from when I first arrived here, I think we go one citation in twenty nineteen. So uh, so that's a a big change. Typically, he works uh Friday, Monday, Tuesday, twelve to six and Saturday, so twelve to seven. We've got a report, a draft report that I just wanted to share with the council and um. Uh, Jerry can speak to this if he wants, it's draft, engineers hate it when I put draft stuff up for the council. But this is the roundabout and the recommended changes to the signage and alerting systems here at Prescott and San Juan Highway. And then there would be a a proposed uh 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 vibrating road to indicate to drivers, especially the trucks. That uh they're not to come down this way, so this would be our permanent plan when we uh. When we put in larger permanent lit signs here on Prescott uh and and San Juan Highway. So we are working on this, it does have a lot of the same recommendations uh as uh as we've already implemented. Uh, last week I sent letters to each of the three growers, alerting them with photographs of uh big rigs stuck in our roundabouts and need your help. And uh they understood, I got a response from two of the growers, which is really encouraging. So we're trying to bring people together on this uh and try and get it back under control. So um, um, on the city manager's monthly report, we also have, of course, a wastewater project update. Uh, we need final comments from Hollister today, so the projects are done, being reviewed by the city of Hollister and it is a hundred percent. Um, we spent a lot of time on permits, especially with US Fishing Wildlife Service. Uh, this is the one that's related to um um the impact we'll have to the stream when we stop. Uh, our affluent water from going into the stream and when we green our our ponds, that'll either not impact uh. Uh, uh, some threatened species in the area, so we need to take uh take steps to correct that. It's been the most lengthy permit that we've had to resolve. We did get feedback from State Fish and Game today, which was really positive, it means that they've finally assigned a new staff person and they're moving forward. Goals to bid our sewer project um uh by around the first of the year, at the end of January, early February. And uh now that we're making progress on these complicated permits, it looks like we're going to be there on time. Um, uh, MNS is working closely with SCantech uh to complete the bid package, I believe the city attorney has reviewed it as well. So it'll be ready to go after the first of the year. Um, meeting with growers to coordinate schedules for construction, um, Thursday morning at ten, I'll be out at Coke Farms, they're very concerned, they don't want us. Disrupting uh the the movement of their goods, uh and try and minimize that as much as possible. So we're gonna learn how to accommodate their schedules. And then uh restarting the growers' conversation about connecting to the new main. Had a good conversation with uh Cypress Water uh this week. Uh, the status of our wastewater treatment plant is stable and we are not uh in jeopardy of uh. Uh, fines outside of the chloride and the salt that we've been struggling with. We have a lot of the um the other things under control and the and the plant is running stable. Um, and and the water we're getting from the growers is much improved, so that has a lot to do with that. Um, I did meet with a Hollister uh assistant city manager to begin discussions about the the long-term contract and the cost of treating our sewer water. This is all within the the rates uh that were approved a year ago by the city. Um, but better news today on the phone, uh uh from the USDA, that they'll be able to come through. Uh, they got news from the federal office that they've accepted our application for a four million dollar loan and a. Pardon me, a ten million dollar loan and a four million dollar grant, which will complete the financing for our sewer project. So all these pieces are coming together, but we submitted our payments for the settlement agreement with the water board, there's no more. Uh, uh, threat of being uh, uh, threat of settlements uh with the water board, we resolved that. And we uh, the the Jimmy Panetta grant that we received, the one million dollars, we've started that financing project as well, that's called the NEPA Stair Grant. That's a lot of technical stuff, but needless to say, we're doing really good on the wastewater, and we're moving forward and it's safe for. With hopefully without raising rates near as high as we anticipated, so that's all really good news for us. Water update is moving a little bit slower, this project uh can lag as much as a year behind the uh wastewater project. Um, we uh we see proposed agreements for the new water uh import. Um, but unfortunately, the water quality standards uh in those new agreements was different than those in the MOU. So that's why the conversation has to go with Hollister, because we have to make sure Hollister can accept with the water difference wants to send us. I'm really, really disappointed in that and we're trying to work through it now. Um, so uh we did uh modify the city water needs in that agreement, uh reducing our costs, that's really good. Um, and we loosened up uh allowance, uh allowing the city to self-finance, which is the way we did with the sewer project. So those negotiations are pretty intense and they're ongoing. Um, but the postponed uh work on the design, uh they postponed this until the agreements have been executed, so there's pressure to get that done. Uh, we went through and and tested all the backflow devices in the city, um, and we're writing letters to some private owners about backflow devices that aren't working. The backflow devices prevent irrigation and other water from backflowing into our system, so it's an annual event that we go through every October. And then uh the new rates are into effect, water rates are into effect November first. And um, this is what they look like. Um, they're going from, uh their monthly rates, uh base rate of fifty-five seventy-six is going up to sixty-five ninety-one. And the biometric rate is going from six thirty-five per thousand gallons to uh seven dollars in pilot. So a press release went out October twenty-seventh and notices went out in October building uh with a bilingual uh tactic. So um, the city's utility assistance program is still available for people who are having trouble paying their utilities, it'll pay after three months. And that will be uh in place until September twenty twenty-three. We are having trouble uh with our uh higher utility rates, uh at least we can offer help for a little while until September twenty twenty-three. And then uh, we reconvened our uh urban growth boundary uh sphere of influence subcommittee. Uh, with four members, um, leading chairs, Scott Fields, council member Fields, um, Mary Edge. Um, and Jackie Morris Lopez and EJ Sabatia. And this is after we sent uh letters inviting uh at the sixty-sixth parcel unit. Uh, to meet with staff and the city about whether or not they were aware that we were working on our sphere of influence project. And whether or not they wanted their property or they had a preference to be within uh the sphere of influence or or outside. Who I was able to meet with three property owners who responded. Um, and they were all favorable, uh Coke Farms was one of those. Um, and and so those meetings went well. Um, the community members met November second, uh a week or so ago. And we had a good discussion about green belts, um, and green belts are important. When I looked at other cities that had protected their boundaries, uh they actually worked with the county to form green belt agreements. And in Perry County, this is an example we shared, um, that the county takes a strong role in that. And so where the the county has uh strong agreements outside the city boundaries, the sphere of influence can be tight. The political boundaries of the city, but right now, we need to talk to our county and and get them engaged about green belt agreements. Which we, so we have a new map, which is exciting, um, and it describes, distinguishes those. Few properties that were viewed in the sphere of influence from the green belt properties. And I'll just share it with you, the yellow properties would be within the sphere of influence. Um, and it's probably smaller than the twenty sixteen general plan. And these uh, these green, this green line would be all preserved in green belt. So that's the uh, that's the uh recommendation going forward. And uh we'll meet again with the subcommittee and we'll send these letters out this week to these property owners and confirm. And we'll try and have this wrapped up by the first of the year, so that we can resume this work and bring it to the planning commission after it's seated in January. And that's a quick update on the urban growth boundary committee and the membership of Vida Pitchen. Um, our safety committee met as council member uh Fields alluded to, uh the county office of emergency services is there. Um, we've been working on commercial truck enforcement, so I won't take much time on this. And um, one thing that was mentioned uh during their safety committee was developing block party permits. And so I'm looking into that with the assistant city manager. And then lastly, um, Midnight Express is on our agenda again tonight. Um, it's had a big impact on our legal and planning staff, it's taken a lot of our time, so we hope that we can resolve issues with them as soon and the better. Um, we did spend about three hours last week just talking about invoices and deposits, so hopefully we're making progress in that regard. Um, we have a new uh accounting software that we're implementing, which requires a new chart of accounts for our finance system. And uh, it was a January one kickoff, so um, I've been really uh fortunate to have Wendy and and Veronica. Uh, Wendy Mariaga working on that with me, and it's gonna be a great upgrade to our accounting system and finance system. Um, we had a joint meeting with the mission, uh, the Aromas, uh San Juan Batista Unified School District and the State Parks. Where we walked from the Alameda to Casa Maria, talking about how the three agencies need to work together. Make their properties, make the most of their properties. And we're still waiting for the school district to get a report from the state about the status of the uh the school. Uh, as soon as we uh learn what the seismic improvements will be needed for the school district, we're gonna begin to plan and finish this. It ties in directly with our active transportation plan. Uh, we do have a draft of the plan, uh, this is our trail system. And uh we talked about whether or not the trail system could be on the El Camino Real and included behind the mission, whether the. whether the trail system could come in along the creek, along the soccer fields. We're not sure. They may end up putting glasses on the soccer field. So there's a few bottles up in the air. What we're thinking of is a joint planning commission city council workshop in January. Once the city council is seated and the planning commission is reappointed, then we can start fresh. And maybe the two bodies can work together and come up to speed on the active transportation plan together. That would be great. That would be a great way to kick off that draft. We had a really positive meeting, productive meeting today on the gas station. The new owner is moving forward now that the reimbursement agreement has been approved. And we're looking at a few loose ends as far as the building permit. And we're trying to get the building permits issued as soon as possible on that. We're also working with Caltrans. We had a good meeting with the Caltrans group on the Radnor Turn Lane. So both of those pieces are moving together at the same time. So with that, that's all the time I'm going to spend on this.
Nobody's touching the mic. That's you.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Edge?
Thank you for the report, Don. A great job. I just have one question, going back to the law enforcement, when it took so much time to get a deputy out. Were these days that are, we don't have the deputies there? When all of this happened?
I'm not sure that they're able to provide a dedicated deputy because his staffing is so low. That's what we heard Officer Ryan Miller report to us.
Okay, so we no longer have a dedicated deputy?
I'm sure that it was a temporary situation because they're having such a hard time with recruitment. But that was supposed to evolve in November. So if that happens tomorrow, I'm meeting with the town crowd and then I can share that with you.
Thank you. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Flores?
Thank you, Don. No comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fields?
Just a couple of comments. I want to thank Councilmember Edge, Planning Commissioner George Lopez and EJ Sabatia for all of us sitting down calmly and hashing out this, this new boundary that we're hoping that, you know, will stick. We all had the same goal in mind. And then if you have any questions, please reach out. If anybody's listening, if you have any questions, please reach out and give me a call. And then I can, I can walk you through what we were thinking, so we can clear up any type of, any rumors or innuendo. Thank you so much, Don, for getting us all back together and hashing this out. I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Don. Great report. I just had a question on the signs concerning the roundabout and such. I just want to make sure, the new one on 129 or First Street as you're coming in, is a flashing sign that was loaned to us by the OES. Working great. I just want to make sure that it continues to be before Prescott, because once the trucks get past Prescott, there's no way to turn around for them, you know? And, and the mud in that area, I don't know if you've I've been traveling that road for 20 years or more, and it's really sticky and oaky, and they get stuck all the time. I even saw a little Amazon truck that was trying to go down a dirt road next to Earthbound Farms or Taylor Farms now. And there was another Amazon truck with a long nylon rope trying to pull it out of the mud. So it was, you know, that's, that's just to show you how bad it is out there, and they really can't turn around, you know, particularly in the winter time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don, thanks for getting the UGB Sphere of Influence group back together again. My greatest appreciation to Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Edge, Planning Commissioner Jackie Morris Lopez and EJ Sabatia for this. Thrilled. Thank you. Nothing else. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Maria, I'm bringing you in. Once you unmute yourself, your three-minute timer will start.
Hi, my name is Maria.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Maria.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Maria Orozco. I am the owner to Midnight Express. In the comment that our city manager, Don Reynolds, just mentioned about Midnight Express obtaining much of the time of the legal and planning department, I find that a little bit unjustifiable to not saying in total clarity. The reason we're being used, we're using the city's time is because the billing of CSG, Harrison Associates, and Forleaf, all subcontracted companies by the city, have set billing that is not very clear. A lot of it is block billed, and there's really no specific timing. A lot of the bills have been sent already almost a half a year to not a year since they've actually were billed or since actually the time was consumed. And it's very difficult to understand why are we getting charged for consultant fees when they're actually engineers? It hasn't been clarified yet. We've been working with Bob and Brian to clarify if the consultants you guys have or the city has are actually hired as engineers and being charged as engineers to developers or property owners, or if they're being hired as consultants. Because the prices that were in the city's resolution say engineering fees at $150 per hour. And when the billing comes from Harrison Associates and Forleaf and CSG, they're billing at 185 to 220 an hour, plus the 15% administration fee that the city imposes to the developer or property owner such as us. So it is very confusing, and you know, I don't want to be wasting the city's time, but it needs to be clarified. The city has also missed most of the payments that we have given to the city. We gave a total of 19 payments, only about two or three was actually accounted for. So it has to do a lot with the accounting that the city has. They're misplaced or not really cleared where they're at. But from what we had been talking to with Bob and Brian, it's apparently they have been working through it, and they have been finding, and they did find all our payments already. So, you know, it's just, I'm really, it's really questionable the way the consultants are being hired. Either they're engineers, planning department, or actual consultants. And Forleaf, for one thing, Forleaf has been charging in two-hour increments, which if you call and talk to them for any occasion, five or 10 minutes, they're going to charge you two hours. That's pretty.
Time is up. Maria, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from Zoom?
At this time, there are no other hands raised. Oh, sorry, I binged. Sophia, I'm bringing you in. And anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak, now is the time to raise your hand. And in the meantime here, Sophia, I'm bringing you in. Once you unmute yourself, your three-minute timer will start.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Sophia.
Hello, it's actually Michael Poncy.
Hi, Michael. Welcome.
I'm using her computer. No, I just, a question for City Manager John Reynolds. If he could elaborate a little bit more on the water, he's working on proposals from the report. He stated on the difference, on the MOU on the water, the quality and quantity. If he could elaborate a little bit more on that, because that's what our whole project is about, the quality of water and the quantity. I'd just like to know what, what they're working on. Thank you.
Okay. And at this time, we have no other hands raised. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns from Zoom?
That's all of them.
Oh, sorry, from, from the chambers? Okay, thank you very much, all. Public hearing, we're going to open public hearing, and then it will be continued to another day. So I would like to now open public hearing to hear and consider objections to the proposed abatement of the public nuisance at 451 San Juan Hollister Road in the city. You have two minutes. Do we have any public comment? On Zoom, sorry.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor. For those on Zoom who would like to speak, please raise your hand now. You'll be brought into the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak. And your time will start once you are brought in and unmuted. And right now, I am bringing in Maria.
Ms. Orozco, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this is Maria Orozco, property owner to 451 San Juan Hollister Road. I do object to the nuisance. We weren't given the adequate ability or even option to abate the violation. Brian, the city assistant manager, said he wanted to take full control. City took full control. Chapin-Woller study was performed, never was given to us, neither was the invoice. And we have already obtained our civil engineer. We've already did a study on the property, which Chapin-Woller had done. We did another one. We already are in contract with a biologist and an archaeologist, and we are working to remedy this situation as quick as possible. We, we spent a lot of, we missed a lot of time because the city wanted to take the lead. Obviously, it wasn't done the way it was supposed to, and here we are months later. And all I can say is that we are working as quick as we can. It's really up to our civil engineer and the biologist and archaeologist. They said they can do in a couple of weeks to do the study. And for them to get everything put together, it's going to take, I don't know, a month, couple of months. We also are waiting for the results from fish and wildlife, which may take another couple of months. They've been working on this project since about June. They've already had environmentalists come out, so we're really just sitting ducks until they're able to perform what they need to perform. But we are already in contract with everybody. We have everything, you know, starting up, and hopefully we can get this done as quick as possible. So I do ask you guys to remove, if possible, the nuisance. I don't believe that we're, or nuisance to the, to the city. We are trying to do whatever the city's asking of us. And we weren't given the opportunity, since the city wanted to take the lead. And until now, like I said, we do not have the Chapin-Woller study, which we don't need no longer. But that was already given to the city at least three months ago, which was never given to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any other hands raised at this time on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Do we have any in chambers? Seeing no hands. Do we have any comments from the council? Councilmember Edge? No comments, no questions. Thank you, Vice Mayor Flores.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields.
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
No questions or comments.
Thank you very much. I have none either. The public hearing is now closed and
No, excuse me, we don't want to close, but we want to continue the public hearing to the special meeting scheduled for November 29th and 5:00 p.m. The reason we have to continue the public hearing is because the publication in the Hollister Freelance was not able to be made within the 15-day limit that the code requires. So in order to have that 15 days, the hearing just needs to be considered, opened and continued to the 29th.
Thank you for that clarification. I am going to continue the meeting now until November 29th, 2022, where we will open it up again for or continue public comments. Thank you very much.
That's at 5:00 p.m.
That's, that's correct. 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
And Ms. Orozco's and her attorney have both been advised. And the, I'll just speak briefly. This, this action of declaring the public nuisance does not preclude the property owner from abating the nuisance. It just provides a vehicle for the city to do so for these violations that still remain on the property, provides a mechanism for the city to do so. And we will certainly cooperate and try to make this go as efficiently and as economically as we can. But it places the ability to abate the nuisance within the city's jurisdiction. If in fact that needs to be done and provides a mechanism for the city to recover its cost of abatement for, for this matter.
Thank you very much. Number seven.
We have lost chamber sound.
We have lost all sound in chamber.
We have. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Action items. Approve a resolution of the city council of the city of San Juan Bautista, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated joint use agreement between the Aroma San Juan Unified School District and the city of San Juan Bautista. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in June, June 14th, the city council adopted a resolution, 2022, that 53. And that resolution established a joint use agreement between the city and the school district, allowing the city to use the American Rescue Plan funds that we receive to install fencing, more than 1,000 linear feet of fencing to protect the buildings, the school here in town, and allow the public access to the recreation facility, basketball playground. The district then quickly abruptly changed superintendents, and the new superintendent came in and had concerns and actual improvements and upgrades. And she asked that we hit the pause button, and we did. And we drafted a new MOU to replace the old one from June. And the new MOU encompasses a little bit of the pickleball, that we would lock and unlock the pickleball courts, and also the restrooms at the soccer field, that school district owns the soccer field. So it cleaned up some of that mess, and it also described more clearly how the city intended to use the school district property when it was available, which frankly, we wanted to use it like a park. It wants to be open and available to people for recreation. And the initial agreement talked more specifically about specific recreation programs. So that was an important fix on the city's behalf that they made. And lastly, she needed to understand better what hours the students were on campus. And so we now have specific hours of when the school would be accessible. And we were waiting for one gate. One gate was installed near some portable buildings that was only 10 feet wide. And on the 17th, they'll be installing a 20-foot gate to allow the fire apparatus in the, of the, of the facility if necessary. So that's the last improvement that's needed and should be done this week, should be done day after tomorrow. So that is good news. So the school district will be considering this same agreement tomorrow night at their board meeting. And I think we have confidence it will be reestablished, and that hopefully the school ground will be open as soon as this Saturday. So I keep our fingers crossed that the council takes action tonight, and the school board takes action tomorrow, and we can get this project up and running. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Edge?
The 20-foot gate is the, is there going to be a fence? Flush to that, or how is that going to work? It's hard for me to imagine.
But we put up, we put in 1,000 feet of fencing between the buildings and the basketball court, for example, and between the gymnasium and the basketball court. And there are six gates in there that are open during school, so that the children can move about the campus and change classes, et cetera. And, and so next to the basketball courts, the, the state architect determined that gate to be too small after we had installed it. That was one just minor detail, just to make that gate larger. But yes, it has fencing on both sides.
Okay, that's just, it was hard for me to imagine, but thank you. Thank you for that report.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Flores?
Ah, no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields?
No, no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, thank you. This has been a long time coming. Been working on this project for a long time. And, and I'm overjoyed to see it now that anybody who wants to will be able to go down to San Juan School like they can right now at the Roma School. Shoot hoops, play basketball, three on three, something like that, play volleyball, uh, play. Whatever game they want to on, on, on the playground and asphalt that's available within the, with um. That's now outside of the fencing, actually. So the school is still inside the fencing. Uh, I think it's a great improvement for all San Juan. Will make our quality of life better. Thank you. And thank you, city manager, for accomplishing. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, super excited to start opening up facilities for uh public use. Long time coming. Uh, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from Zoom?
Anyone that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now by using the raise hand, by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And we have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Chambers? Nothing in the chambers. Thank you very much. Uh, action item seven B authorize staff. To post accepting applications for the planning commission.
We need to vote on.
We need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh my gosh, I'm trying to zip through for everybody to. Get to discussion items. My apologies. Thank you. Um, can I have a motion to approval resolution of the city council of the city of San Juan Bautista? Authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated joint use agreement between the Aroma San Juan Unified School District. And the city of San Juan Bautista.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, sorry. Uh, motion made by council member Freeman, seconded by council member Edge. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Action item seven B authorize staff to post accepting applications for the planning commission.
Yeah, and, and a report.
And I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Uh, motion made by Vice Mayor Flores. Any public comment?
I, I got the motion by, say sorry, Vice Mayor Flores. Who was the second? Was that Freeman? Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Um, do we want to allow public comment on this action item?
I did, I did ask it, but there's nothing here.
I'm sorry. Okay, and anyone on Zoom who'd like to speak on this, please raise your hand now. And no hands raised, so. I'm ready to take roll whenever you would like.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Uh, discussion items. Uh, if the council will indulge me for a moment, I would like to switch items B and C. And go A, C, B, D, E. That's okay?
A, C, what?
A, C, B.
What happened to B?
We'll take A, then we'll take C, then we'll take E.
Thank you very much. Uh, consider changes to the sign ordinance. City manager.
I'll defer to uh. I'll defer to uh Brian Fauch, Assistant City Manager. Uh, attached in your package tonight is the memorandum that. That the city sent July twenty nine, twenty twenty two, after complaints and concerns we received regarding the use of signs downtown especially. Um, and Brian will talk to the subject matter, um, and perhaps we need to modify the sign codes. Brian?
Certainly, um, I'm gonna share my screen just to um have that particular um. Let's see here if I can find it. Um. Did have it. That's not it. Um, just a minute. Uh, but just to summarize, um. I'm like, I'm going to stop this sharing just for a second because I do have it. Staff report. Uh, okay. So is this uh staff report on the screen at this point? No, it's not. Okay, all right. Here we go. Okay, so this whole uh topic uh started when, of course, we. Were obligated to uh based on complaints that we received uh to notify people who. Had signs uh that fell within the list of prohibited signs. And you can see here um in the list, A, B, C, D. Um, and so on, uh, a, a long list of prohibited signs um that um. In a regardless of exceptions, which are relatively limited, um, all of which um are not allowed. Uh, in the city. Portable A-frame signs. Of course, we have a lot of A-frame signs in the downtown on Third Street and elsewhere. Uh, we do, we do have some uh internally illuminated signs, although those uh that we do have are covered by exceptions. We don't really have any animated moving or simulated movement signs. Uh, we do have some portable signs. Uh, those are uh A-frame signs, but mostly. Uh, those are A-frame signs that we have that are portable. Um, and uh, we, we, we don't really have a problem with signs affixed to vehicles or trailers. That are not associated with the business. Um, we do have some signs. Uh, that are affiliated with businesses that are uh prominent uh periodically. Uh, but those are used for the businesses. Um, and then we don't have any conflicts with the signs that we currently have. Um, and we don't really have any problems with safety hazards. Uh, or signs that obstruct doors, windows, and fire escapes and so forth. Um. You know, there are some signs that obstruct uh views, but uh those tend to be letters on windows that are. You can see, uh, you can see through or see beyond into the inside. That, that of course is a safety and security issue. Um, in addition to um other uh, you know, visual uh problems. Um, we, we have had some signs attached to public properties, but uh usually. Um, you know, a, a simple word from code enforcement uh has resulted in those uh being, being moved. And we have very little, uh, few problems with signs that are attached to um. Um, you know, public property. So predominantly, the, the issues that we have seen are with. Um, signs that are portable or that are A-frame signs, and I think that. Uh, is, is the issue. We do um. We do have uh a requirement uh in the ordinance for a site and design review for signs. And I noticed in the, in the, in the history uh here, we have um. Had planning commission uh approval for uh some signs. And it's not, it's not really clear uh that planning commission approval is necessary for all. Signs uh in the sign ordinance. Uh, some site and design review permit in the historic district is necessary uh for that. Uh, but I, I think that uh those can be accomplished administratively uh often. Uh, so I think what we have um is um, you know, this long list of prohibited signs and sometimes it. Sort of gets in the way. People um, you know, really needing to have more exposure uh where. You know, it's not really clear um that there's a business operating in some locations and. You know, site visibility is a problem for a number of reasons. Uh, so uh, that's kind of an overview. Um, and I know it's a, it's a hot topic uh downtown.
Thank you very much. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Edge?
Thank you for that report, Brian, and no, I don't have any comments or questions.
Vice Mayor Flores?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Freels?
Thank you. Um, I did have a few people talk to me about a letter that went out. Um. I would have hoped for more of a, a one-on-one. Sorry. I would hope for more of a one-on-one with um the folks that, I guess with the. Folks that people were complaining about. Um, I think that might have been a little better approach than the shotgun approach with a three-page letter, pretty lengthy. It's. I mean, we just heard the code enforcement did a kind of face-to-face with a couple of people and that was able to get cleared up. Um. I understand the sign ordinance is um, especially downtown in our historic district, we definitely need to do some, you know, some type of site review. Um, I really don't have a problem with the portable signs or the A-frame signs. Um, as long as they, you know, follow ADA compliance, they're not in anybody's way as far as blocking. Um, and they follow this, the sign itself, the, the portable sign or the sandwich board is. The same sign as what was approved for the business. Um, I, I don't have a problem with that. Like I said, as long as it's not a safety hazard or um, or affects ADA compliance. Um, I have noticed some signs go up in town, especially in the historic district and it um. And I don't know what we have as far as temporary type stuff, if we can just put some plastic banner up. Um. I've noticed a few of those. Um, and I think there was a little, I think there's kind of some confusion with uh this, the sign. Ordinance issues with downtown. It's not a new problem. Um. I, I shared this with my dad. I mean, my dad is gone, uh. Only because I was gonna say when my dad was the mayor. I was ahead of myself here. Um, when my dad was the mayor, we had. A problem with, or the city had a problem with some, the big open flags and such things. Well. Due to very poor. Um, reporting, um, it went nationally that the city of San Juan Batista was not allowing American flags to be formed in the building. We received death mail. We received death phone calls. Um, I mean, it, it, it was scary for a while. As a, as a young man and my dad being threatened, his life being threatened, so um, it was a. It was brutal. Um, so this has always been a hot topic, uh, Brian. I know you just said hot topic. This has always been a hot topic for downtown and. Um, yeah, maybe it should be revised. Maybe we should clear it up a little bit. Um, make sure we have a quicker process getting through the, the historic resource board and the planning commission. Um, it shouldn't be too tough. It shouldn't be that tough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman?
Uh, thank you. Um, I've had several people uh come and contact me about this sign ordinance and. And, and most of them were our business owners on Third Street or, or close by. And, and they all think particularly the A-frame signs, the, you know, that, that are outlawed or presently not allowed. It's just too restrictive and I, I, I tend to agree with them. If we wanna be supportive of small businesses, we have to allow them to advertise and attract. People to come into their shops and be able to buy whatever they have for sale. So I, I, I. I'm basically agreeing with Scott that some sort of revision I think is, is in order. Um, it's um. I, I think the sign ordinance now is a little bit too restrictive and I understand if we loosen up, you know, we can go the other way. Um. A, a, and the sign becomes so big that people can't lock down the sidewalk. So obviously you want, like Scott just said, ADA compliance. Uh, not interfering with the entrance to any store or establishment, but I, I, I think those um. Revisions are in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from the public? Zoom land?
We do, Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else here on Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your hand now by pressing the raise hand button. When you are brought into the meeting, um, unmute yourself and your three-minute timer will start. And at this time, I am bringing in Cara.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Cara.
Thank you, uh, council members. Uh, yes, this is indeed a hot topic for me anyway. Um, you know, the planning commission worked on this ordinance. I think it was about five years. I hope Van Diggy there is on the line as well, and maybe she can comment on it. But they spent about five years working on this sign ordinance. Many compromises were made with the merchants. And the question is, why are A-frames needed? Each business has a sign, a legal sign that they've um put on their business, I presume. So why do we need to junk up our historic downtown with these A-frames that are all over the place? And, you know, they are a hazard. Uh, we have a lot of wind in the afternoons. I have personally picked up. A-frame signs that have blown over into the sidewalk. Um, they're just unnecessary. And remember, we're trying to keep an authentic historic downtown. Why do we have to have all these A-frames? I've been to other very historic towns and I'm quite sure they also ban A-frames. They're very, very junky. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
And now I'm bringing in Jackie Morris Lopez.
Thank you. Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Yes, um, I have to agree with Ms. Bonk. Um, I'm a purist. I think our whole. Um, M O here is to preserve our historic nature of the downtown. Um, you know, I get it. People need to attract businesses, but what happened to having a door open? And people strolling by and looking in and being invited by looking through the window or having an open door. I do believe that the A-frames is nice as some of them can look. They're basically blocking um foot traffic on our sidewalks. And they do take away from the authenticity of what we're trying to promote downtown. I also feel that um, there was a lot of work put into the sign ordinance and I, I think that we really, I don't see a need. For changing it up much. I definitely appreciate the acknowledgement of the old-time neon signs, which some of them don't even work. On Neil's Market, Mission Cafe, and the Paradise Bakery. It would be really cool if they could. Uh, make those neon signs work, but as far as the other flashing neon signs. I don't really favor those as well, nor do I like cardboard signs or fluorescent green and pink. I feel like the landscape downtown doesn't afford itself to have. The colorful banners that people put in their homes or seasonal banners. Maybe on special occasions like uh craft shows and whatnot, hanging a banner is okay. But I feel for everyday business, we need to really go back to basics. We are historic downtown. And I appreciate that, uh, that look and that ambiance. And this is no offense to the business people, truly not. Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, I'm bringing in Vanda.
Vanda, welcome.
Yes, good evening. Um, thank you for this, this time. Uh, yes, I, when I was on the plan commission, the city council actually tasked us. With revising the sign ordinance. Um, we didn't spend five years. I, I'm embarrassed to say it was more like two years, which was an inordinate amount of time. We, we met weekly. We invited the public. We invited the merchants to come. Um, unfortunately, not many did come. Uh, Larry Cabrand of Rare Light Gallery was there. Um. Uh, Boykin, I think, from Mission Gallery was there. Um, one thing that, that Boykin did that I really liked is when they were open. He had a, like a uh shingle that he'd put on the side of his building and it said open. When it wasn't there, it wasn't open. Um. So we did spend a lot of time. We solicited input from the public. We got input. We spent a lot of time thinking about it. We, you know, it wasn't willy-nilly. And to, we took into account that it, it is, it wasn't, maybe it wasn't then, but it is now a historic national. Historic district, so we, we wanna be mindful of the ambiance. Um, I think a lot of merchants actually put their merchandise out on the sidewalks, which is a whole nother issue. I was surprised to drive through. I was surprised to drive through town and see all the lighting inside windows at night when the stores aren't even open, you know, colorful. I don't know, with chase lighting, whatever, but that's probably another issue as well. I mean, is it just the A-frames that are bothering some of the merchants? You know, I'd like to hear what the merchants have to say. I didn't see that three-page letter. They apparently council saw it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, we do not have any other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Chambers?
Is the green light lit? Okay, there's a big button.
Thank you very much. State your name for the record, please. Please speak directly into the microphone. Welcome, Mariana.
We are getting no sound on Zoom.
Pardon me?
You have to talk right into it.
I think if I, as a tourist, which I've been coming here since sixty-seven, were to walk down the historic district now, I would say the signage shows desperation of the businesses. There are so many signs, and they are so, they not tasteful, and they do not reflect this historic community. If you have one sign that is appropriate to the city and the street on which you're on, which is a historic street, that will speak for your business. But the signage, the way it is now, and all the posters that are everywhere are really ugly. So I don't think you should do any changes unless you have a very good committee that is going to be there and consider everything. When I had an antique business, a four or five-third, I was given, when I applied, requirements for sign, for a sign, and I followed them. It was, it's not the signage that's going to bring with the business. It's the quality of your business, keeping up with your customers, and being open on a regular basis. And I do not want to support anybody, I can, I would gladly take you for a walk down the street and point out to you what is really inappropriate for this town. And I will not support any change.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comment in chambers? Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Jill Fagren, Two Hundred Seventh Street, San Juan Batista.
Thank you. Welcome, Jill. A little closer to the mic.
Yeah.
Green light on?
Okay, I'm in agreement with the majority that's speaking this evening. We have a historic district read on the National Registry of Downtown Shopping Districts. What are we doing? I saw some signs out there that looked like I was at a used car sale. What are we doing? So I think we need to dial it back, and maybe a few of the exceptions would be one or two of the sandwich boards that direct down to a street or maybe a menu item that day. But no, I mean, what's going on on Third Street right now needs to be corrected. And I think we need to stick with the ordinance as it's written.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Please speak directly into the microphone.
Fran Fitzharris, Brewery Twenty-Five, a local business owner. And, you know, I just wanted to add that I think that a lot of folks that come and do business here and open their business, I don't think they understand what it is to have your business in a historic district. A lot of people come here, and I think we need to do a better job of letting them know what that is. And the way we do that is, I'm not a fan of A-frames either, but we need to give them more examples of what's acceptable. And I don't think that we do enough of that. You know, Vanda brought up the shingle. You know, I have this little piece of wood that I just hang on the side if it says "open." So we need to give more examples to these folks and not just say, "No A-frames," and shut them down. We need to introduce them to, "This is how we do signage in a historic town." And so that's why I agree that we need to look at revising and giving examples. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so as these are discussion items, our charge to staff would be to bring this back as, or dedicate a subcommittee and bring it back and work with staff to either change or take a look at the ordinance and go forward. So that's something we can work on, or the new council can work on when it's official. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, can I just make one comment? The city does have a set of sign guidelines in the city of San Juan Batista Design Guidelines, among other things, in that particular document. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And it's particularly instructive, I think, with respect to design. And also, you know, has some standards per character size and so forth. So I think the city does have some instructions. People would, in the historic district, consult those. There are some questions in the sign ordinance that I think would be helpful. For example, we have some brand-new businesses that want to know if they can change the face of some signs that are referencing the ordinance as remaining intact. And that particular term is very vague. What does intact mean? And so I think it'd be useful to have a conversation about some of these things that are difficult for staff to interpret and contribute to this sort of confusion and lack of appropriate guidance. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Next item is the Parklets. Let me just post something, sorry. Parklet encroachment permit requirement. Brian, is this going to you as well?
Yes, it is. So this question is all about what is intended in the encroachment, in the encroachment permit ordinance regarding whether the encroachment permit has been utilized and what that really means. And I'm going to, again, share my screen, so hopefully I can make that work a little bit better here. There we are. So these are the relevant code sections addressing what happens when people obtain an encroachment permit. And we call these permits for parklets a transformation of Third Street permits. Of course, everybody knows, you know, the genesis of parklets is really all about enabling businesses to continue to operate during this past, you know, two and a half years, you know, and during the pandemic. And I think the purpose here is that with the encroachment permit is as we have moved through the pandemic and its various forms and iterations of the virus and so forth, it's not always clear, you know, what the status is should be relative to that problem. And so, yeah, the regulations that we have don't really contemplate a situation like this. And so what does it really mean when we issue an encroachment permit? And it says that the permit, the authorization for use authorized by the permit has to occur within ninety days. And if that doesn't happen, then the city manager may cause the street to be restored the way it was prior to the encroachment. And so it's a very general statement. And then there's a companion statement with respect to relocation or removal of encroachments. And I added this to the discussion this evening. Seven-eight-two-five-five is in your SAC report or in your packet. Seven-eight-three-forty is something that I added this evening for the purpose of this discussion. But it says here that encroachment permits that aren't being used, any installations or encroachments that are no longer in use, the committee owning, controlling, or maintaining shall relocate, remove, or abandon the same at their expense. And so the question is, what does it mean that the work or use needs to, you know, be completed within ninety days? And what does it mean that it's no longer in use? So the question here is, you know, whether or not you build a permit, you build a parklet, you've done what the encroachment permit allowed you to do, whether, regardless of the activity or lack thereof on those parklets, the encroachment permit allows you to construct a parklet. If you did that, then you exercise your encroachment permit within ninety days. We do have an applicant for encroachment, received a permit on, for a parklet on Third Street, but never built it. And that permit expired. So that person will have to obtain a new encroachment permit. And then that'll be considered in light of city council's decision not to allow additional parklets on Third Street likely. So that's sort of the, you know, the question is, how do we apply these particular standards to this use that was never really contemplated to be, you know, sort of a function of the encroachment permit itself? So we're trying to, hopefully it's not, we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, I think it's important because we do want these parklets to be an active presence on Third Street. And if they're not being actively used, then what's happening there with those parklets? So that is the question, I think. What should happen with those parklets?
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Edge?
Thank you, Brian. I just have one question. Did I hear you say that someone has applied for a parklet?
Yes.
Did I understand you?
Yeah, we have issued an encroachment permit for construction of a parklet. That encroachment permit is several months old, never been used, and that then would expire.
Well, you know, my only comment is this. The reason we brought out the parklets was because of COVID. We needed to have a place for our business owners to be able to have their business, run their business. And so that's why we we brought out the parklets. But I would say now, I think we need to start scaling back and not not allow any more parklets. But I don't know, it's not up to me. I guess it's up to whatever we decide on. Everybody decides on. But that's my only question and comment.
I think the city council, on a previous action, directed the city manager not to issue any additional encroachment permits for parklets.
Thank you. Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Flores?
My concern with the parklets is that I was under the impression these parklets were put up for restaurants, and people had that kind of business, as opposed to a store that puts all kinds of garbage out there that's got nothing to do with the use of the parklet. And the parklets, I think, belonged to the restaurants because that's what saved them during the COVID. And I think they should still use them. I just don't think that businesses should, you know, they're not serving liquor or beer, I mean, food, whatever. They shouldn't have a parklet. That's my own.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Frails?
I'm a little bit confused about this item. So it says, "Parklet," this is on the agenda, "Parklet Encroachment Permit Requirements." And I have a small paragraph right here that gives the that gives the permit requirements. And it's pre-cut and dry. Nowhere on here does it say, "Discuss the future of parklets." So I don't, I'm a little confused. Why is this, why are we seeing? Why are we seeing this description of encroachment permits, for one? And what are we supposed to be discussing? I don't, this makes, it's perfectly simple. I mean, it's right here. So I'm not going to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, I guess is what I'm putting.
Yeah, maybe I can help a little bit. I think the question is whether, if a parklet's constructed, there has to be some activity. Is that what's meant by the encroachment permit? If there's no activity on the parklet, does that mean that it's no longer in use? That's the question.
Well, that's not what I have in my packet, though. What I have in my packet is the terms of the encroachment permit. And that's all I have.
Correct.
And I'm looking at, on the agenda, "Parklet Encroachment Permit Requirements." And I'm seeing in the packet. So like I said, I do not feel comfortable about speaking about the demise or keeping parklets. That's all I have to say. So I really don't want to comment anymore about this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. Following up with what Scott said, I'm also very confused. I thought that we took action, I think it was seven months ago, to to continue the parklets to either the end of the year, which would be December thirty-first, or till when certain certain time period ran out, and I'm not quite certain when that was. As far as parklets go, I agree that they fulfill an important function, particularly if you're a restaurant. I really kind of, just like Vice Mayor Flores, I really question the use for things other than a restaurant. It just looks not very good. And I think in this time of year, it's really cold outside, and no one wants to eat a hot dinner in forty-six degree weather. It's just not that pleasant. I'd say nine months of the year, it is. So there probably needs to be a three-month hiatus or four-month hiatus for winter time. And then we need, and maybe it should come back on the agenda as to what do we want to do with the parklets? Do we want to extend it? Do we want to decrease it, increase it, et cetera, et cetera, permit it? Regulate it, control it, or just let it go? That's probably how we should put it on the agenda in the future and discuss it there and there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So commenting on the parklet encroachment permit requirements, clearly it states in the term of the permit that if you are not using the parklet or the, if you are not using the encroachment permit within ninety days of receiving one, then it shall become void, and the city manager may restore the street. Can't talk to me. May restore the street in accordance with SJBMC seven-eight-one-thirty. So if we have parklets that are not being utilized, then should they, should we should we restore the street to its original condition? That's the way I'm reading all of this. Uh i- that's the way I'm reading all of this. Um so a conversation needs to be had. Um if. If we are to, if a if a encroachment permit is not being used, if a parklet is not being used, should should the street be restored to its? Uh former use. Um and then at some point down the line, uh speaking to Scott's concerns. Um and uh John's comment uh at a at a council meeting coming soon to you. The viability of merchant parklets in the in the first place. Uh questions, comments, and concerns from Zoom land?
We do have a couple of hands raised before bringing people in. Anyone who would like to speak on this, please raise your hand by using the raise hand button. And you will have three minutes to speak when you're brought in. Once you unmute yourself, your time will start. I am bringing in Vanda first.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Vanda.
Thank you. Hello again. Um. When discussing whether or not a parklet is utilized, I think you have to be careful to define. When, you know, what is the utilization twenty-four seven? Um occasionally used? I mean, that's a very broad parameter. You'd have to define that because. Some of them appear to be not used, but they are used. You know, it just it just depends on what you're looking at. So that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bringing in Jackie.
Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I agree with Wanda. You have to be more specific about the utilization. And I agree with um Scott that I think the issue at hand is not whether or not. We believe that certain types of businesses should have had the parklets. We're kind of more focused in on this encroachment that Brian brought up. It appears to me, without looking at your packet, I didn't want to download a hundred twenty-two pages tonight. That apparently maybe one or two business people have a parklet that they haven't utilized, quote unquote. Um my other concern is that we do need to look at that. I I agree. Um what's the timeframe? What is the specifics of utilization? Um because they are taking up, you know, a public street, taking away parking, et cetera, et cetera. Uh my other thing is that when people do have a parklet, that it that it matches with the product or the business that they have. Enclosed in their brick and mortar, uh because you are giving them in a sense free square footage. And if they all of a sudden expanded their business to selling items that they weren't normally selling, is that indeed then a different business? It's no longer the same and no longer looks the same. And I and I see examples of that on Third Street as well. So this whole thing is very, very confusing. But I think the issue right now is the non-use and how you want to define that. Um and then moving on when that time comes is extension of that, but that's not the topic here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Margot, welcome.
Hi, thank you. This is Margot Tankersley. I own Margot's Ice Cream Parlor. And yeah. I I am more confused now. Um. But the purpose of these parklets, uh when they were originally built, was that, you know, customers didn't feel safe. Going into the businesses and. Businesses couldn't open inside, but I don't see businesses, you know, when people pick things. That they want to purchase, they still have to now go into the business to pay for it. So unlike a couple of the restaurants, you don't have to go in at all. You can pay. Right out in the parklet. So that that's one concern, and most people are not concerned anymore about having to stay outside. And things um such have been lifted that we can all do business inside. Um. I also was very concerned because um I felt the inspections on the parklets at first. Everything just kind of went wild and um with. The uh per the parklet requirements and such, I don't, they don't all look the same. They um they take away from our historic downtown and. When uh there were quite a few of us that were pretty happy when Mission Cafe's parklets disappeared. Um it really opened it up and you can even see the building much better, the historic aspects of the building.
We have lost Margot, and so I'm bringing in Urban.
Hi, Urban, welcome.
Right. Thanks again for having me. You know, I was just taking at this, taking a look at this section. Um seven, eight, two fifty-five, and it seems to me it's fairly clear that uh. It says that if the work or the use is not completed within ninety days. Then the permit shall become void. I mean, I can't imagine anything clearer than that. So all of this uh. Uh you know, discussion seems to be. Well, I I'm glad people are expressing their opinion, but as to that issue, I think it's 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 very, it's been black and white. It's in the. In the ordinance, seven, eight, fifty-five. You can read it for yourself. It's plain English. So um. I think you should keep that in mind as you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, we do not have any other hands raised.
Thank you very much. Members of the chambers. Come on up, speak directly into the microphone and please state your name. Welcome.
I'm sorry, Mayor. We cannot hear and we did not capture the name.
Mariana Thomas.
Thank you, Mariana.
Okay, the parklets were brought in as a solution to accommodate COVID and help businesses. So what happened, some businesses who really didn't need a parklet started thinking, well, I better get out there. So we had parklets in the first block. And they were just sticking out. Remember, people, we're now getting back to normal. And normal mean Third Street needs to be cleared. That's public property. It was only property for parklets was allowed. They were allowed there because to accommodate businesses because of COVID. Now, we we are, we are all fortunate and other communities all over Monterey Peninsula have done this. They're going back to normal. We need to have Third Street be what it used to be. It is not pretty now. I mean, that sarcastically. Those barrels don't do it any good. I mean, let's just, Scott, I'm surprised at you. Come on, you know what the issue is. We did it to help people during COVID. COVID hopefully is over. And now let's lift the horse in the mouth and get Third Street back what it was. It's public property.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name, and speak directly into the microphone.
Fran Fitzharris, three twenty-five.
Hey, Fran, welcome.
We were um actually the first to build our uh the first parklet. And um it sounds like there's definitely needs to be some further discussion. Um all I'm going to say is the purpose of the parklets. Were to support food and beverage. Food and beverage were shut down during the pandemic. We were not allowed to have anyone inside our premise. So that's why we, that's the purpose of the parklets. And so all I want to say is that. It's been such a big topic, controversy, all these comments, but in the end, you guys did the right thing by allowing the parklets to help these businesses survive the pandemic. The rest of the conversations will come later, but thank you. You did the right thing. Businesses survived. Food and beverage survived because of you guys. I remember each of you voting yes, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? You step forward, state your name for the record.
Jill Pagg, grand two hundred and seventh street, San Juan Batista.
Hey, Jill, welcome.
Thank you. I like the parklets in the fact that when you drive down Third Street, there's people in them. However, there's only people in Doña Esther's and Anacas. I don't see people in the other parklets. They're just an obstruction. So I'm wondering if maybe you can't reevaluate how that looks and how that will work because. According to your statute there, it needs to be used. And all the all the other parklets seem to do is block the street and the view of their own businesses.
Thank you very much.
Can I say something? That was kind of called out. It's all right. No, I I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure everybody understands what I'm talking about. This agendized item says parklet encroachment permit requirement. Nowhere on it does it say that the what we're going to do, the restoration of of Third Street, the demolition of parklets. Going back to more normal, COVID ending. It doesn't say anything there. All it says is the encroachment permit. In my packet, I have the encroachment permit. Every one of those encroachments, every one of those parklets were built within ninety days. We don't have anybody standing on that street. Counting ninety days at a time or at each parklet, standing next to one of parklet and saying. Okay, it's day forty-five. Somebody used that parklet. That's what I'm getting at. Um we need to agendize these correctly. If we're going to speak on this, if we're going to speak on the demise of parklets, that should be on the agenda. All I'm going to speak on is I understand the encroachment permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so uh moving forward, thank you all for the discussion. Uh moving forward, this will be brought up. Uh again, depending on the new council on uh where to go from here. Uh Brian, thank you very much for sharing. Uh the the encroachment. Permit itself. Um and. Whether or not a business has been using it for ninety days. I mean, that clearly one can see if a parklet has been used within ninety days. Uh. But further discussion to be brought up at a another council meeting. Um not as a discussion item, um but as an agendized item on uh. On the viability of parklets and what to do with um. Uh where to go with uh the encroachment permit and lack of use. Uh, thank you all for your comments on Zoom and in uh the chambers. Next discussion item is funding for seniors program and benefits of forming a nonprofit council, uh a nonprofit council member Edge.
Thank you. I'm going to try and make this as short as I possibly can, but I I wrote things down, so bear with me. The seniors council is a local five oh one C three nonprofit organization, operating five distinct programs. Including being the state-designed area agency on aging of Santa Cruz and San Benito counties. In its role as the area agency on aging, the seniors council is responsible for funding. Or directly operating the programs of the federal. Older American Act and the California's Older Californians Act. These programs include services such as home-delivered meals, nursing home protection, legal services, and many other services. Each program must comply with state and federal service quality regulations and provide local matching funds. To federal dollars. It's the seniors council area agency on aging's task to ensure services meet these standards. Including both operational and fiscal compliance and effectiveness. Every location in the United States has a designated local agency on aging. Local designations allow services to be designed to meet the needs of older adults. In San Juan Batista, for example, are different from needs experiences in Los Angeles or San Jose. Also differing is the number of programs available to service, to serve seniors, as well as a shortage. Of financial resources to provide matching funds for those programs. In many parts of the country, county, or even state government perform the duties of area agencies on aging in our region. In in our region, Santa Cruz and San Benito counties both recognize that these duties can be performed more effectively. More effectively by local nonprofit than by either the two counties or any of the local cities. The seniors council performs these duties with financial support from local government. The San Juan Batista Senior Committee was formed in twenty twenty-one, has been operating entirely on its own. We have monthly activities for our local San Juan Batista seniors. This last summer, it was decided that we wanted to have our own identity by naming our senior center. The committee decided that our name should reflect someone who was instrumental in helping seniors of our community. And it was decided that the senior center should be named in honor of Mary Velasco Solon. She was a big big help to a lot of our seniors here in San Juan. With the support of. Saint Francis Retreat Center and the Community Foundation of San Benito County, we were able to host a reception at the Saint Francis Retreat Center. And Mary Solon's family members were there and many of our seniors were there also. And just to clarify things. Uh we do not have a a local um center just yet. It is one of our goals. To have a place in downtown, a permanent place. So currently, we are using the community center. Um and we have been uh meeting there. And then last month, we met at um at the New uh Le- Luna Art Gallery. And we made a mask for Dia de los Muertos. On December fifteenth, we will have a potluck and Christmas boutique um at the community center. And uh as I said, a lot of people have confused the reception that we had in at uh. The Saint Francis Retreat Center and thought that that was going to be our location, but it's not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Flores, questions, comments, concerns?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Council member Freels?
Thank you. This is definitely a long time coming. I'm really surprised that, and there I'm really surprised that there isn't a program like that in this town, especially. You and I, growing up here, and we saw how people took care of each other. Um I I hope that we can uh hope that we can help you as much as possible. Um and if you want me to be your go-go between, um and I'd like to volunteer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Freeman?
Thank you. Uh I'm fully supportive of your efforts and just uh anything I can do to help uh it's it's needed in this town. It's needed in every town, frankly, but it's needed in this town especially. And. Anything I can do to help, I'm willing to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um a little bit of clarification. Um. We do. Uh we do have a program. Uh Hovest Antonio uh has been supporting San Juan Batista for years. And uh. To to not duplicate efforts. Totally uncomfortable. To not duplicate efforts, uh it was their recommendation that. we don't start a, our own group, our own, as in the city of San Juan Batista, but that we continue to work under their umbrella. We had a meeting last Monday with members of the Board of Juvenes Antonio. And there, there was an exchange that although they would like to continue to support our efforts, we have to have an MOU. We have to, we're not sure exactly how the, the board would look or, or members of, of the, the chapter of Juvenes Antonio's in San Juan. So without going, we are not able to do anything without that MOU. So we have decided to, to work. Well, I mean, we need the background because we're, we're not actually under them anymore. So to continue to provide services, to provide activities, which is different than services, but to provide activities for our seniors, we decided to do it as a group of seniors providing stuff to do for our seniors, for, for lack of a better term.
So, so we are the, the San Juan Batista Committee. So that, we're the committee. So, but, but you know what, we're, we're, we're forging forward. We have had a lot of support and so we're just, you know, we're going to go our, you know, go on.
And thank you to the, thank you for that. Thank you to the San Juan Committee, also known as the San Juan Batista Business Association, who has used us, who is allowing the San Juan Seniors Committee to be a writer on their, on their insurance so that we can have these activities. Thank you. We appreciate you. One of these days, send money. Questions, comments, and concerns from the public? Zoom land?
Anyone who would like to speak on this, please raise your hand now. And when your time comes, I'll bring you into the meeting. You'll have three minutes to start. That timer will start once you unmute yourself. I'm bringing in Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Welcome.
And thank you, Norma. And I just want to have a great big shout out to Councilwoman Mary Edge. I want to thank you for everything that you're doing to drive this project forward. As far as the comments that Mayor shared with Juvenes Antonio, they kind of left us high and dry a long time ago. So I know there's different parameters of services they provide and what Mary Edge's project for the future. You know, I don't see why we can't have our own. And maybe under the umbrella of the Tri-County Council on Aging. But I think that, you know, on our own right, we deserve to have this for our own citizens, our own residents. And I just want to thank you so much for doing this. And good luck in the future going forward. And I think all the seniors that are attending really appreciate it. I think it's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, we do not have any other hands raised.
Do we have any members of, anybody in the chambers wishing to speak on this? Thank you very much. That comment was to have a beer tasting for seniors at Brewery 25. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Discussion item D, execute an agreement for the purchase of conservation credits to mitigate the adverse impacts caused by the decommissioning of the wastewater treatment plant as a result of building the city's new sewer force main project on Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. This matter, when it came to our attention in October, sounded like it was going to be urgent because it's an opportunity to mitigate some environmental concerns in our sewer project in particular, running the, the force main to Hollister. But, but since then, we learned that the, the state has not issued its permit to the city. So we take advantage of the, of the opportunity to discuss this because it's a, it's a big gnarly, complicated issue. So it gives us two bites at the apple, so to speak. So let me introduce it tonight, and then hopefully in, at our December meeting, we'll be able to bring it back for action. Any project, any project, especially the size of a six-mile pipeline, is going to have pretty broad and unpredictable, unavoidable environmental impacts. So when we designed the course for this project, both to simplify and, and, and expedite, expedite the project, we chose to avoid disturbing any kind of property that may involve threatened species or, or sensitive species. We put the pipe down the middle of the road, literally, except for a few small spots where, for example, entering onto San Juan Highway and heading up to Prescott, the route will cross an irrigation ditch. And there may be salamander and frog species in there that are threatened. And so whatever happens, there's a process that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Control and that the, that the state Fish and Game are also involved in to prepare a secret document saying, okay, your project will have this impact on these species. And these are your options on how to mitigate this impact. And one of the biggest impacts we're going to have, which was a surprise to me anyway, is when we stop putting our affluent into the No Name Creek, the creek will be dry most of the year, and that would be a loss of habitat to these two threatened species. And also, surprisingly, when our ponds are not, no longer being used except for emergency basis, those ponds would be dry and would also no longer be habitat for these species. So the question from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they worked on a biological report and they prepared it. And our, our environmental team, EMC, prepared it. And it talked about how to mitigate these impacts. And we're talking constant biological monitoring. They first suggested that we find a way to put water back in the creek during the breeding seasons and back in the ponds. And we don't have water that's, that could do that. Our well water is too salty. That's our whole problem. And so the word unavoidable applies in this case. We're going to have an unavoidable adverse impact on this species habitat. And in your staff report and in the agreement, there's a table that describes on page four what that impact is perceived to be. And this is right out of the biological report. And there are different categories for a breeding habitat, including the ponds and irrigation crossings. It's a three-to-one offset. So if we're going to impair one acre of the species habitat, we would have to mitigate that with three acres. And then you go down the list, and there's temporary disturbances involving staging areas for construction, which are just a one-to-one. And then the total area that's estimated in the biological report and was subsequently approved by U.S. Fish and Wildlife was 7.8 acres. So what does that mean? What, what does that quantity mean? It means that back in the 1990s, the federal government, and then subsequently the state government, allowed for the establishment of land banks. And land banks are when there are wild habitat in or near this area that can provide habitat for these species that that land can be preserved and protected. And in this case, there is locally Sparling Ranch. And I provided the council and in the staff report, some, an article from Benito Link back in 2016 of Sparling Ranch being used by the Santana Development, Housing Development in Hollister, Santana, where they were able to buy acres of land in this ranch, this 2,000-acre ranch, and set it aside to be preserved in perpetuity, to preserve the habitat of the species that they were disturbing. And of course, Santana Ranch is a large development, much larger than our 7.8 acres for our pipe. So what, what's, what's the, what's being proposed in, in this project is that the city, rather than try and maintain habitat for the species, which it has not the capacity or the fiscal capacity or the mental capacity to do in perpetuity, that we, that we buy, speaking of mental capacity. I don't know why that came along. Running out of it, that's like. It's a lot of work. Thanks, John. Yes, compliment. So we have the ability then to buy 7.8 acres of Sparling Ranch. And what the money does is it goes to fund that biologist. It goes to make sure that the fishing wildlife, when they come and, and examine the property, that this habitat is actually being preserved. No, we're not allowed to walk on it or have a picnic there because that would probably destroy the habitat. But, but the whole idea is we have to mitigate the environmental impact that we're causing when we build our project. And so we have received approval from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and we are being reviewed currently by the State Fish and Game. And when the State Fish and Game issues its permit, we hope that they agree with U.S. Fish and Wildlife that that number stays at 7.8 acres because the cost is pretty, pretty expensive. It's $60,000 per acre, but we pay it once and we're done with it. We have no more liability, no more responsibility to mitigate the impact. But the total cost to our sewer project would be $468,000. That's, that's far above my authority. So I'm bringing this matter tonight as a discussion in case there are questions that we can take back to the biologists, that we can take back to the South Bay Conservation Resources that owns the land bank. We had Michael Anderson on the, on the call today to learn about their experience with the developments in Hollister that relied on this as a mitigation measure for the environmental impact. So this is one of the last steps that we need to take to get our sewer project off and running. And it seems to be the quickest, most cost-effective method. But when we say cost-effective, we often don't say $468,000. So I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to just put this out there and field any questions now before we try and take action on this in December. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Edge?
So on the, going out, the, out of town on the north end, there's a bunch of cattails along the road there. And so I know that there's got to be some little critters in there. So are we talking about keeping that wet? Or is it going to dry? And I, I'm not clear.
So Mary, it's a combination of things, councilmember. Right now, a lot of the reason that's wet is because we are putting our flowing water 160,000 gallons a day into the creek, right? And it's coming under Third Street and then outside there. That's why that's wet. It won't be wet when we stop and we send that water to Hollister. So that will be dry, and that's, that's the, that's how they're making this calculation of impacted habitat. That's part of it. We're going to perpendicular to get into the middle of San Juan and then Prescott, so.
So there's seven, there's seven acres. Where is that going to be? Where is that? No, well, it's the locate, so it'll be at the Sparling Ranch.
2,000-acre preserve.
And it, oh, and it is a preserve for sure.
Yes, it took them seven years to reach that.
Okay. Alright, I'm clear. Okay, thank you.
I know, that's what I need. It's kind of weird.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. It's, it's, it's in, it encompasses San Benito and Santa Clara County portions of it. So we'll keep, we're, we're asking for a San Benito County portion.
Mary, I think it's the Hawkins Ranch.
Alright, I know that.
Sorry. Vice Mayor Flores?
I have no comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Frails?
It's a tough one to swallow because regardless of how much money we pay, we're still going to dry the creek up. We're going to mess with an ecosystem. I get that. I wish we could take the $468,000 and put it into our treatment plant, make it so we can put water into the creek again, but Don, we're answering to, are we answering to U.S. Fish and Wildlife on this one? Or are we, you said, you mentioned something about California Fish and Wildlife, California Fish and Wildlife agreeing with it. That kind of confused me a little bit.
So there's something called a take permit, where we've applied for a stream alteration permit. Obviously, we're altering the stream. And, and then there's a take, an incidental take they refer to. And both U.S. Fish and Wildlife issued a permit to allow us to do that, and Fish and Game, the state has to issue a permit. But we have the biological report, the study's done, and we have the federal approval. We're just waiting for the state approval, which we hope will happen between now and December so we can bring it back. So it is actually bold, and it's called an incidental take.
Sure waiting for the, for the state to take for the state. It's a lot of money. It's a tough one. This is almost like extortion. And also, I wish I would have known that as a little boy that that was sewage being dumped in my creek. Because I probably wouldn't have caught all the crawfish I used to catch.
I understand there are turtles living in the pond.
Yeah. There are some Asian ducks. Yeah, this is, okay, I got a two on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm happy to bring the professionals that we were able to talk to them today over the phone, and they're more than happy to come to our meeting when we're ready to take that.
Sorry, I'm looking at you. Go ahead. No, sorry. Councilmember Freeman?
As an aside, not as a question, there's ducks, some other species of birds and herons out there, a lot of them, not just a few. And, and the turtle. The sewer plant's supporting life quite nicely. My real question is, the $468,000, will that be able to be discharged through the money we receive either from a grant or a loan?
Yes, we do have a budget for environmental mitigation in our $18 million that we've set aside.
Thank you.
So, and, and, and that 400, almost $500,000 is something that we can do for mitigation today as opposed to a three-year biological study and the cost of the consultants. There is a biological opinion out there. But it would be a, a three-year study with biologists and bringing U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Fish and Wildlife, Department of Water Resources, and Army Corps of Engineers back into the picture. So it would prolong our, our pipeline going out. So it's a, something that we do today, and, and the consultants can speak better to this. But it's something we can do today or something that we put off for three years. We put off their regional water control board for three years. We put off the EPA for three years. So we get bogged down in the proverbial weeds the longer we wait on this and increase costs all the way around. So, sorry, questions, comments, concerns from Zoom land?
Anyone that would like to speak on this matter, please use the raise hand button and raise your hand now. And then you will be brought into the meeting to speak for three minutes. And we have no hands raised at this time in Zoom.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns from the chambers? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Discussion item 8e, municipal election update. County 30-day canvas of election before results finalize. December meeting, recognize outgoing council members, swear in new council members, and appoint a mayor and a vice mayor. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So we've carried an election status.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so um we've carried uh an election status item on our agenda for the past few months. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to talk about, cause I consider myself on how we proceed, especially with um the city uh uh clerk and the city treasurer. And uh Bob, the city attorney, shared with me uh the attorneys in partial analysis, which talks about um a yes vote on Measure B and we have also a yes vote on Measure W. Favors changing the currently elected position of the city treasurer is that the lead, like the W uh elected city clerk to appointed city clerk. Um in cities I've worked for before, um General Law City, uh in the Empire County, uh the city clerk was an employee of the city manager and was hired by the city manager. Um my boss was at one point the acting city clerk. Um and then he uh appointed the city clerk manager. Welcome to Mark Park, California. Yeah, we appreciate it. Uh um and and but the city treasurer is a little different than that. A city treasurer is generally a third person uh looking in at your organization. Um and reading these arguments, um they're not required to be uh an elector or resident in the city. Um and would also allow the council to consider adopting an ordinance allowing the city manager to appoint. So I don't know if uh how the council wants to go with this, but we need to make these decisions um sooner than later because uh the city treasurer's position is filled right now and and that would become vacant thirty days from November seventh. Mayor, the end of November. So um so we need to resolve the city treasurer position uh sooner than later. And we need to have a conversation about how we would want to proceed, appointing a city clerk, whether the council wants to do that or or uh consider an ordinance operating the city manager to do that. So um I don't know if Norma or or Bob or anyone has an opinion on on either of those.
We could certainly draft an ordinance depending on uh what the council wanted to do. Uh I'd have to look at the at the uh election documents. If the treasurer, city treasurer now serving as a uh an appointed position, the city treasurer's office, that how it how it is a present?
Yes, uh no one ran for office, so the council appointed.
Pointed, okay, so we'd have to look at that. Uh this she may have been appointed for the full term, in which case it would kick in, the election would kick in after the term ends. The treasurer, yes. But I believe in the city clerk's position, there's no one currently serving in that position. So the position is vacant. That would kick in immediately. Sure.
Norma, do you want to weigh in on that?
No, I agree. There's um obviously, I think that Dawn and Bob have done a really good job of addressing the appointment versus the elected. I believe that it definitely does need to be looked at. Bob is correct. City treasurer appointment determines um would fulfill as the motion would have been made. The clerk is vacant. That is a position and the council needs to decide if that's something um the treasurer and the clerk would be appointed by the council or the city manager. As to um the commonality here in the state, it really varies. And I do find that there are clerks that report directly to the council and that's generally of larger communities. Um and then mid to smaller, it is a position that is of the um appointed by the city manager. Again, every community gets to make their their process and whatnot, but I I agree with Dawn that a city of this size and even up to what I've seen like in the fifty thousand population is that it's generally appointed by the city manager. Something to look at with your charter, look at your ordinances, look at what the measure stated in the um before the electorate. And who the personnel managers are and and all of that, but more work to be done.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Edge?
No comments or questions?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Flores.
No comments, no questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Freels?
Uh no comments, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Thank you very much. Uh Zoom land?
Sorry. Anyone who'd like to speak on this matter, please raise your hand now by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. Chambers? No comments. Thank you very much.
I did have one more thing I wanted to add regarding the election. Um it was recommended by um, I don't believe it was Norma, it was Lori, our our other helper in the city clerk side. That we consider as a special meeting to do the change of guard. Um because that would be uh an opportunity to meet maybe instead of December twentieth, December thirteenth and see the new city council, but also uh applaud with gratitude the service of those who are are retiring from service. And a chance to eat some cake and have some coffee and just make it a night of recognition and celebration. And then have our meeting on the twentieth as a regular business meeting and move forward. So I I don't know if the council, I know it's the middle of the holidays. It's it's an extra night. So yeah, just wanted to throw that up. Whatever the council pledger, we can continue to to talk about this. We have to make a decision.
Whoever made that recommendation, I like it. Uh okay, uh uh if we could uh have a recess and go then directly into closed sessions, uh a conference with labor negotiators, cities designated representatives, the city council, unrepresented employee and city manager, Don Reynolds? So it's just the 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 two people that we, uh Bob, the two people, okay? Okay, the subcommittee will will uh go into, well, we'll all go into closed session. Um and understood. Thank you very much. Please sit by all.
We, again, Mayor, we need to give the public the opportunity to speak on this matter before you enter into closed session in case there's something that they want to say that you need to have consideration within your deliberation in there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're we're at recess for a moment and then we'll come back, ask questions and then go into closed session.
Perfect. Thank you.
Jackie does have her hand raised now, I look down, I apologize. And Jackie, I'm bringing you in. Once you come in, unmute yourself and your three minute time will start.
Thank you, Jackie, welcome.
Mayor, I guess I'm a little confused about this item. I thought there was a closed session at 5:00 PM. And anyway, for what it's worth, I think that you really need to kind of consider, this is a really important decision, and it's a hard one, I understand that. We have a new council coming in shortly, three to the five that are up there and two that are leaving. I don't know if you're considering maybe a hybrid way to, as far as extension, I don't know if it's for three years, a year, but it might be a good idea to allow the new city council to work with the city manager for a bit and maybe do an interval review before making a decision that might extend, you know, three, five years down the road. That's my input. And develop some benchmarks as a way of measuring success or task or goals met. And also, I'm a firm believer in peer review or coworker or people that work for or along with an individual that is being reviewed. I think that's really important to get feedback. And also from the community, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have, do we have any other public comment?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much, and none in chambers. We are going to close session now, and we will come back. Attorney Raffey will bring us out of closed session, and we will discuss the final action item, item 11A. Thank you very much.
Could certainly do that. I'm making a report now on the closed session. The council met on the matter listed on the agenda this evening, which was conference from labor negotiator. And I have a report to make under California Government Code 54953C3. And that report is, this is my oral report as a summary of the recommendations for final action on salary, salary schedule or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits to the city manager. Council unanimously determined with all members present and voting in favor that the city manager compensation would be increased to the amount of $165,575 per year. The council also determined that the city manager's employment agreement would be amended to provide for four months of severance payments if that became necessary. And those, that payments would be made with the continuation of benefits during that period. There were no other salary, salary schedule or fringe benefits made or recommended to be made in the amendment. And the term of an amendment would be to extend the employment agreement for the city manager for two further years. I believe that concludes my report on the action taken this evening in closed session. Yes, we would do, we could do public comment on the matter, which is now to consider amending the employment agreement with city manager Don Reynolds, and that would be, the amendment would be in accordance with what I just reported out.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on Zoom land?
Anyone who'd like to speak on this item, raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. We have no hands raised at this time in Zoom.
Thank you very much. May I please have a motion for the city attorney to prepare an amendment for employment agreement with the city manager, Don Reynolds? Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Flores, second. Councilmember Freeman, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Frails?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, motion by Vice Mayor Flores, seconded by Councilmember Frails. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Frails?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Note, for the record, the meeting has, the motion passes at 10:14 PM.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you very much.
Great job as usual.